It is my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, February 5th, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. We have not quite a full board tonight. I don't know if... What is that? That doesn't say Mitch, does it?
No.
At some point, we may be joined remotely by Mitch, but I don't think so. So we have five members here tonight. We will dive right into item number one, which is, as always, the information exchange. Kyle, you have a report for us?
Yes, just a quick update. So the PRB has not been... had any meetings the past few months. We've been pretty slow on applications over the winter. But we also haven't done one of these in a little while. So going back to the PRB's November meeting, the Varney Heights Multifamily Affordable Housing Project, 42 units on Varney Road, that was approved at the November meeting for PRB. So they're working on their condition compliance now and see where that goes. But it's all approved subdivisions, site plan, everything. AEC Engineering, they're building on 172 Lower Main. They got approval for a 2,500-square-foot building addition, some parking improvements. They're just expanding their office space to meet some increased demand. Desert of Maine got approval for two additional campsites at that November meeting. They're placing a couple more of those geodesic domes there that they got approval for in the past. Tuscan Bistro, at that November meeting, went through a design review certificate application to replace some of the windows and light fixtures along their front facade in like the middle portion of that building there.
Does that mean they're expanding?
I think they're looking to potentially expand the restaurant into the middle portion. Not making any actual expansions to the building. Then we had a staff review board meeting not that long ago, where Harris Seagate Inn, they got approval for an 1,100-square-foot deck addition in their rear courtyard. And then at 8 Varney Road, the existing building there, made an application for a change of use. Previously, it was office, manufacturing, and a brewery. They're switching to just office and manufacturing, but kind of redistributing that amongst the inner-floor area there. And they're also making some facade improvements and parking improvements, taking away some of the existing impervious area around the side and the back of that property and adding in some landscaping and planting. So overall, good stuff. But yeah, that's been pretty much it. We should have some more PRB applications coming up in March and April, probably.
Great.
And then number two, designer review ordinance update. We're still working with North Star on getting a draft ready to come back to the board and potentially have a second joint workshop with the planning board and PRB to move that along. So we'll keep you updated there.
Excellent. Item number two is a review of the minutes from the November 6th Planning Board meeting, which it looked like, at least assuming the minutes are accurate, which they usually are. Thank you, Sharon, once again for doing excellent minutes. Everybody was there that night, which means that we can use our existing quorum to approve those minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we vote on that? Other than the usual accolades for Sharon. Super thorough. I didn't read every word, but I got through most of it, and it was right on. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written? From Dave in a second, from Rosemary, all in favor? That's unanimous. Excellent. Item number three is the 2025 Planning Board meeting schedule, which was listed in our packets somewhere, although I don't know if I actually got a print. Is there a printout here tonight?
Yeah.
Here's a screen.
Yeah, I did. I looked at it, but no, I don't. Okay.
So just a overview. I mean, the dates are every month, it's the third Wednesday... Or, sorry, not PRB. First Wednesday of each month, with the submission deadline for any applicant-driven text amendments or map changes being three weeks before that. So keeping it same with our same process, but just updating the dates so people can keep that.
And this one looks, I mean, like July 2nd. We may have some folks out of town that week, but I think in some ways it's easier to do July 2nd with a big weekend after than to do what happened, what was it this year, where it was like July 5th or something? I forget. Yeah, it was closer. So I think this is... seems fine. And then I think it's probably worth noting that, especially with the comp plan and design review and other potential high-value changes, whether applicant-driven or just, you know, we have a bunch of boards and committees in town working on various changes that may trickle down to us. There may be a need for two meeting months. In, you know, I don't... it's not like we're going to do it for four or five months in a row or anything, but I think there may... we may have a couple of times where we need to schedule an extra meeting. So just to put that out there. Although I know we have, in the past, as a board, talked about it and generally agreed that it's easier to do a longer meeting with a break than it is to schedule a second meeting. So if it's possible to do that, I think we should keep trying to do that, but it may not be possible every month. So. Item number four is a public hearing, or will be one, about proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance regarding... Sorry, does anybody have any other questions or comments about that? As I moved on quickly from that about the schedule, we're all good. So this is proposed amendments regarding municipal compliance with state statute reg... What is it? 30?
Oh, 30A MRS.
Yeah, A MRS. What is that subsection?
4358.
4358, Regulation of Manufactured Housing. Proposed amendments to Chapter 21 zoning ordinance, including changes to Section 104 definitions, Section 202 nonconformance, Article 4 zoning district regulations, and Section 524 mobile home parks. Before we dive into this, I have disclosed this in the past, but I do work for a company that is a licensed manufacturer of manufactured homes. We also have a dealership arm, so we install them as well. I don't think that anything we're talking about here tonight or anything that I do at work impacts my ability to make good decisions about this. If anybody feels otherwise, please speak up, but I do not plan to recuse myself from this discussion. We don't make what would commonly be referred to as mobile homes. These, you would not know that they're manufactured unless you were there when we craned them into place. So.
The purpose of this is to comply with state law?
It is to comply with state law. It's not like a...
Making policy here.
It's not... we're not making policy, but I feel like in the interest of disclosure and transparency, I gotta say that. So Kyle, do you have... do you want to start us off with a little background?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I can just give a brief overview. I mean, this is a pretty minor change overall to the ordinance. As was just said, this is really purely a compliance change at this point. So in March 2024, LD 337 was passed, which is an act to amend the regulations of manufactured housing to increase affordable housing. So it's important to note that the reason that this went through wasn't just, you know, to allow mobile homes in more places. It was specifically to kind of tackle the issue of, you know, kind of increasing the variety of housing types that were allowed, you know, anywhere where normally a single-family home was allowed. So that was the primary result of the change. It amended that statute, the Section 4358, where it required municipalities to allow all types of manufactured housing. So it's modular homes and then mobile homes, newer mobile homes after the 1976 date in compliance with HUD standards in any zoning district where single-family housing was allowed. So previously, a lot of communities, including Freeport, had mobile homes as a separate land use zone, as its own unique use in certain districts. So in our case, you know, mobile homes were a listed permitted use in the RR1, MDR1, MDA, MDB, and RP2 zones. So you would think of anywhere else, you know, the village districts, any of the commercial districts where single-family homes were allowed, mobile homes wouldn't have been allowed there previously. So this change is aimed to change that, where mobile homes would be allowed in those areas. But as you can see in the red line, we've actually struck out the mobile home use. So now what we've done is amended the definition of manufactured housing, where it just references that state law definition. And it has this kind of clarifier that, you know, when you're looking at permitting manufactured housing, it's considered, you know, the equivalent to the like form of a residential use. So a single-family, if it's in the form of a single-family home or a duplex, that's how you would permit it in the district. So with this, we're able to strike out the mobile home use from any of the zoning districts that it was permitted previously. And manufactured housing, so modular homes, mobile homes just become allowed as single-family homes and duplexes going forward. Should be noted that even without this change, as this is already state law, if someone had come forward, because we're doing this a little after the fact, if someone had come forward with one of these applications, code enforcement would have still permitted based on the state law, just because that would kind of supersede our ordinance. But yeah, this change kind of brings us into compliance with that. I did put in front of everyone, Wayne sent over shortly before our meeting, just a bit of a clarification in wording on the manufactured housing definition that we were looking to amend. I don't think there was any intent change there. It was just kind of cleaning up the wording. So if the board did want to go with that language or other language to make it, you know, more clear, if there was a proposed recommendation to later on to recommend this to council, we would just want to capture that, you know, it was recommending the ordinance with that change in mind. And then we could put that into the red line before we send it off to council. But yeah, other than that, taking out the definitions of mobile home, modular homes, as those are now captured under the manufactured housing designation, this doesn't touch mobile home park... mobile home parks. So that's still a separate land use. So we're not really touching anything there, other than we did delete our written-out definition in favor of just matching it to the state law. That way, if state law changes at some point, we don't have to keep going back in and changing our definition. It'll just kind of update as state law is updated.
And you want to mention that my suggested language should not have included that first sentence?
Correct. Yeah, so if you look at the language that Wayne had provided there, that first sentence where it says, "A structural unit or units designed for occupancy constructed in a manufacturing facility transported by the use of its own chassis or independent chassis to a building site and ultimately used for residential housing," that should not be there. So if we're making the motion later on to use this language, it would be from "for purposes of" until the end of what's written. That first sentence is language that we were striking out from our existing definition because it's already covered under the state definition. So it's kind of redundant to leave it in there.
Minutes.
But yeah, other than that, happy to answer any questions board members might have. We felt like this could go right to a public hearing and not have a preliminary discussion meeting just because it was more of a compliance issue.
Kyle?
Yep.
Why do you have reserved behind where you've struck an out mobile home? I see you've marked in the word reserved.
Yeah, so we went with that instead of... I mean, the other option was renumbering the list of permitted and site planned.
Oh, so you're reserving the slot, not...
Yeah, so if we, for instance, if any of those districts in the future were to allow, like let's say, a really small-scale version of multifamily housing, like we wanted to allow multifamily housing in some MD district, you know, up to four units. We could just insert that into the reserve slot, and it would be with the other dwelling types, and we wouldn't really have to renumber it again. It's really a preference issue, though. We could have gone either way.
So in the Harris Seagate Historic District, those mobile homes were not permitted? So they are now permitted?
Is that a mobile home park or individual mobile homes?
I remember it was just mobile homes in the Harris Seagate Historic. So they are now permitted?
I'm not sure. Off the top of my head, they could have been a nonconforming use.
Well, they just didn't want trailers.
Yep.
So this would make them permitted, wouldn't it?
Correct. Anywhere single-family housing is allowed, yeah. Yeah, they would now be a permitted and allowable use.
Okay.
But yeah, and a lot of... that's kind of what I was getting at at the beginning there. Yeah, by keeping it a separate land use, a lot of towns and communities, right, they... there might have been certain districts, maybe more of the in-town districts, where mobile homes just weren't a kind of favorable aesthetic or design choice, and people just didn't want them around. So it was the separate land use where, you know, it could be regulated differently and have them in certain parts of the town, whereas this is getting rid of that mindset.
It seems like there... that was always sort of an overly broad way to prohibit a certain type of housing, right? Like if you object, or if a town objects or a neighborhood objects to something about a certain housing type, then putting it in something like design review would be a better... And saying, hey, we can't... we don't want... we don't want to see wheels under your house. Like you can't have visible wheels, you know? Maybe that's what was objectionable, or like you need to have windows that are certain... I mean, actually, you know, the glazing requirements in manufactured housing are quite strict, so... But saying like, your windows have to look a certain way, or your siding has to be a certain type, or your roof pitch has to be a certain... all of those things could be applied, and this change would still, I think, be the right... Because modular housing and mobile homes have gotten mixed up in a funny way. And I think for a lot of people, when you say modular housing, they immediately think mobile homes. So I hope that in addition to bringing us into compliance with state law, I hope this change starts to sort of chip away at some of the stigma of modular housing and allow for innovative ways to build things and recognize that not everything is the same in modular and manufactured housing. And if we object as a community to certain parts of it, then, I mean, you could easily build a trailer onsite, build something that looks exactly like that onsite and get around that particular definition. So if there are objectionable parts of a certain housing type, then we should address that in other...
Not for me.
Other ways. So, yeah, no, I think it's a great... I think it's a great change. Obviously, it's necessary, but I just... I think it's a good change for a lot of reasons. Not something I thought a lot about, actually. But I think it's outside of that, sort of like, why is there such a stigma against modular housing, you know? So.
Snob zoning.
Yeah. Do... does anyone have other questions or thoughts, or are we ready to... Kyle, pretty well set the table for a proposed motion, I believe, including some references to the existing comp plan and ways in which this change or these changes might be found to be compatible with the existing comp plan. Someone want to take a crack at that?
Do we need to have a public hearing?
Oh, we do need a public hearing. Thank you, Dave, for keeping me on the... There's so many members of the public hearing.
Well, I... I'll blame that.
Do I hear a motion? Open the public hearing.
Move we open the public hearing.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, public hearing is now open. Any members of the public who wish to speak their minds? We're not gonna... yeah.
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Move we close the public hearing.
In a second? All in favor? Okay, now we can... we can make a motion. Thank you, Dave. That was a good point. We definitely need to do that. So this... yeah, in the staff report, which I don't even... was that printed out?
Motion to...
Yeah, right at the end.
...the zoning ordinance. Be it ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommend to the council that the zoning text amendment to amend Chapter 21 zoning ordinance regarding municipal compliance of MRS Title 30-A Subsection 4358 to permit manufactured housing in any zone district where single-family dwellings are allowed... are in allowed use is consistent with a comprehensive plan that would continue to be a desirable place to live by allowing a variety of neighborhood and housing types at a variety of prices.
Do we want to make reference to Wayne's suggested change of striking that?
Yes, you guys are gonna have to help me through that section. What have I...
I think we just... just with the additional changes discussed at the...
With the additional changes discussed at the Planning Board meeting.
February 5th.
February 5th. Just right here, Rosemary?
No, that's...
Starting with four purposes?
Starting with four purposes of this section. The terms "mobile home," "manufactured home," "modular home," and "modular housing" are all included within the definitions of manufactured housing as defined in 30A... 30-A M... A?
MRS?
MRS, Subsection 4358, 1A, as amended, as may be amended. For the limited purposes of determining whether any manufacturing housing is permitted in a zoning district, manufactured housing shall be considered equivalent to any form of permanent residential use in that zoning district.
Great. So that language would be the entire definition of manufactured housing, right?
Yeah.
Struck the first sentence. Great. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Andrew, all in favor? Excellent. All right, so that passes unanimously, and we can move on to item number five, which is persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items. I'm gonna guess, given the robust public input on the last item, that there is no one here who wishes to address the board on non-agenda items, but in case I'm wrong...
I'll just call out that I did put in front of everyone a public comment related to the comprehensive plan that we received ahead of the meeting. So it's just for the board to be aware of. I don't know that we need to address it here, but just so everyone's aware, we printed that off.
Okay. Excellent. We... I guess we'll transition. We don't need to close the meeting or anything officially, right?
No, we're still part of the...
So we're still... yeah. But we will move on to item number six, which is a comprehensive plan update. With North Star Planning, we have here Ben and Charles, as usual, to walk us through this, the discussion. We'll try to keep to two hours, which I think is what we have planned for and budgeted, which would get us out of here right around 8:30. So we'll do our best to hold ourselves and both of you to that time.
Just one thing for the board real quick. We do have one item a little different than usual after the comp plan update.
Yes. I think we should table that, but we... yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, given that we have a couple of members missing, we'll wait until we have a full board. Just clinging to power a little longer.
Sam, can I be excused at this point?
Sure, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Sharon, as always. Should be an easy one for you.
Yeah.
Relatively.
Chuck, can you guys hear me okay? I think I can hear myself.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, everybody? Glad to see you all again. So we last met at the library in the beginning of January. This is a little loud, but it's fine. I can deal with it. They'll fix it in post. We met in the library in January to talk really about the first draft of vision statement. In short, I had a two-paragraph thing and some example goals. The highlights of that conversation were to bring more... to get rid of a lot of the fluff, a lot of the buzzwords, some of the words that don't have too much direct meaning, and replace that with, you know, more action. And then I think one big thing that came out of our conversation was this need for balance. So where we have growth has to be balanced of where we're gonna have conservation and preservation. We talked about this, how it related to conversations from the housing workshop, environmental workshop, the future land use workshop, and through a lot of our conversations. So the new vision that we shared with you guys ahead of this meeting, and sorry that some of the documents came in late, we're working with some of our partners on this, but we were able to share the vision draft is up on the screen now and in front of you as well. So if you can't see, so we took kind of some of those comments from the last meeting, brought them down into one paragraph, and really focused on action, getting to the point, and really making a vision that reflects the land use goals of Freeport.
Just a quick question. I know that you... somebody, I think you... some combination of the two. Have you presented a draft of the vision to the council recently? Is that accurate? Or the council looked at a draft?
Yes, I believe the council was sent a draft.
This draft? Or has this been changed again? I probably should know the answer to that question, but I don't.
Hi, Caroline. So the council had a goal-setting workshop, and so I brought with me the draft with some comments from your last meeting, not for them to review and comment, but just for them, as they talked about their goals, to be aware of where draft one of the vision was after hearing from the community. So they didn't get into it in any substance, and I believe it's been a little further modified since that original version.
Okay. So there's been... yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, because I know they had some comments, but it seems like maybe some of those have even been addressed. So.
Yeah. So this is the updated version based off our last meeting. Yeah. Any immediate thoughts on it? Because I just want to kind of jump into conversation.
I mean, I'll tell you that I think that the vision, as far as I'm concerned, a few little, you know, wordsmith itself is looking pretty good. I really don't have any substantive comments there. I have a couple substantive comments down in the, you know, goal section.
Yeah. We can hop there in a second.
I think it's come a long way. Certainly, yeah. I really appreciate the emphasis on balance and that we come right out and say, you know, "Growth in targeted areas will support a thriving downtown and preserve." You know, I think you guys heard those comments, and I like that it's right up front and that that seems to be one of the core missions over the next few years, at least in the eyes of the planning board, as I understand it. So I appreciate that very much.
So I'm forgetting, were the dog bone recommendations specifically incorporated? Or did it anyway change the vision or the comprehensive plan in general?
Not directly. So the future land use area, which we will go to, incorporates the dog bone more directly, I would say, because we're spoilers, calling a growth area the dog bone growth area. So that's the, you know, we're gonna keep that going forward. But the... this... the vision doesn't... I didn't see that it really... some of those impacted. I did...
Seems a bit are in here.
Yeah.
Certainly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we talked about this at the last workshop, too. I think it's broad enough, or it's... I should say, it's targeted enough that it is specific to the things that we want to accomplish. And I think, sure, we could try to shoehorn in all kinds of other ideas, but, you know, I think you're... you made the points last time, Charles and Ben, too, that it's a vision statement. It's not meant to be... It's not the whole comp plan in one paragraph. It's a vision plan, and it sort of sets the table for what's to come.
With regard to just some, you know, language, I think that preserved is misused. I think it should be conserved. Preserved means to lock it up, throw away the key, don't let any... you know, nothing can happen on it. Conserved means use it appropriately.
Is that throughout or...
Throughout. And then I would... I would... there's in... it seems kind of in the middle of this... I don't know what sentence this is. It'll be the fourth, third or fourth sentence. "This approach balances necessary development, including housing business and public infrastructure, with the protection of open spaces fostering opportunities for both in-town and rural lifestyles." I would put in there. You might find that redundant, but I think it's clarifying.
So you're saying...
Both in-town and rural.
So you're saying that not everybody has to live a rural lifestyle?
Right.
Yeah.
Just enjoy...
With the nearby amenities of downtown.
They can actually live in...
Yeah, you can live within the same town.
And maybe they enjoy their rural amenities.
Right.
Yeah.
That was it. Yeah, that was it. Sort of like the, the bit of the vision from the last comprehensive plan that comes up all the time, like providing a mix of, like a variety of type, a variety of lifestyles available within the single town, like it's that sort of-
Yep, I can-
Fostering opportunities for a variety of lifestyles. Rural, yeah, rural living combined with a vibrant home, or something, yeah, I don't know.
I can, I think I understand what you guys are saying.
That's wordsmithing that can happen outside of this, yeah.
Yep. Any other thoughts in the vision, or do you think this is in a place that's, you know, you can really build and as we go the next step into the goals, you can start really pulling like broader categories from it, but on the vision generally seems that we're all, we're touching a lot of the stuff we're talking about.
Is the word historic in here anywhere?
Uh, in the first line, yes.
Okay. I know we also, we had a-
You're gonna speak to the arts, yeah.
Oh, yeah, did you get an email on the arts? Great.
I was just gonna say that, that we had a, we had a comment that came out of the last workshop too, that specifically calling out art, public art, culture, opportunities, or opportunities to, to, you know, foster more performance spaces or whatever downtown and support the arts community in Freeport, might deserve sort of top-line billing in the vision statement as well.
Yeah.
Maybe not top, maybe not quite literally top-line, but somewhere in the vision statement.
Find a spot for it. Absolutely, we can get that in there.
Did you have anything else on that, Caroline? Is that just basically the-
No, but I'm trying not to get yelled at by Tom, so I'm gonna come up. Tom's the cable guy.
No, but I did feel like that was the one thing that was missing that was identified in the vision, downtown vision theme, so I thought it was a good comment, 'cause we heard a lot about that, and then just making sure, I don't, I, it looks like maybe you, I'd given you some feedback, looks like you put some of the terms, I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that we're looking for not only sustainable land use, but sustainable development, that's been something else that we've heard a lot on with the new climate action plan.
I think I have a note that I'm tracking stuff, and that was one of them, but it didn't go into this one, 'cause this is the same one we shared previously.
So, can you just clarify where we go from here, you've heard some comments, are you, are you gonna further refine this a little bit before, I guess we have one more meeting before the-
Yeah, we have one more meeting before the workshop, so it'll be a quickly show, another quick round, like, yep, we added the notes, maybe some final wordsmithing, but that'll just be a final piece, but-
So, if they have, I mean, we, of course, we want comments tonight, but if they wake up in the middle of the night and have a great idea, could they email that to us to get to you within the next week, or?
Absolutely.
Is this what you're working on tomorrow?
No.
Okay, so if there's anything you-
Well, it's a snow day, nobody's doing anything.
Charles is working.
Charles works all the time.
Yeah.
Every day.
If you guys have comments, if you wanna email them to Kyle or myself within the next week.
Yeah, I, this, we can really change this, 'cause like, we might even look after the workshop, someone might come to us with a great idea being like, if we wrote it this way, it would be including this idea. So I think, I don't wanna lock this in as like the vision for the final draft, you know, but for the one that we intend to use going forward, like this framework, obviously we can keep refining, but adding sustainable development, adding a reference to culture, art in some capacity, cleaning up, I think we're really touching all the important notes at that point, too.
Yeah, I think I was more saying if they have comments to get for that, I know you guys are working really hard, 'cause we add, we asked you to have extra workshops, so I wanna make sure we get those comments into you, so you can get that ready, knowing that everyone's gonna read it one more time.
Yep. Definitely have it still available, and I think as we go to the, the goals piece, so, cool with the vision, just wanna create-
I just have one, one last question about, would you, would you think that adding something like the arts have a practical impact of making it more likely the town council would say allocate funding for Meeting House Arts or some other arts organization?
Depends how the comprehensive plan is used, so in terms of allowing, like, for example, allowing a larger performance base, if that needs to be amended in the land use code, like in the zoning ordinance, then having that in the comp plan would allow uses like that to be permitted, or expanded, or built upon. That being said, the lack of it might not necessarily, you know, deny it or prohibit it, but making a reference also just generally commits, because we talk about public transit, all of like, all the vibrant downtown, so adding it does allow it to, you know, have more of a supported strength, especially in the vision.
And it might give town council members more confidence that they're doing something that's authorized by the comprehensive plan.
Certainly, and I, and I think in general, you know, part of the value of a comprehensive plan is it's articulating community values, and so it will not only help, you know, guide ordinances and guide budgeting decisions, but it's gonna help, for example, using that arts example, maybe Meeting House Arts wants to go apply for a grant, and if they can say that this is an important community priority, it's part of the community vision, that can help strengthen their case for doing things, you know, even outside of municipal operations.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I was just thinking that there are practical consequences to the words we use here.
Yes.
Well, and in that case, is transportation a theme that we need to lace in here, is it? Infrastructure, resilient infrastructure, but-
I, I think there is some comment in, some wording in this vision statement and the goals that follow around bikeability, walkability, having, having those kinds of things, if that's what you had in mind. There's nothing in here about the train, there's nothing in here about adding capacity on 295, but these, these are the kinds of things that, again, from a municipal standpoint, the kind of things that a town is concerned with, has control over, what are those kinds of things that'll help provide some guidance?
We probably have no say over 295, but if we could explicitly prohibit one from adding capacity to 295, I would love to see that.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, that's something to keep in mind, if you, if we're going through these conversations and saying, like, as we go into goals, policies, and strategies and say, hey, maybe we do need to talk about public transportation, or maybe it's not a big enough priority to put in the vision, but it's something we can include in a goal or a strategy, so, just something to keep in mind, 'cause there is a whole inventory chapter on it, it was a short one, 'cause there's not much to it. But I do wanna move into the goals. I put them up here, but I didn't add the text below for you, so you have that on your, on the handout, I believe some of the handouts are up front as well. So these are goals I took from the vision statement that we had, that we just went through. I, it's still something I want the, the planning board to identify, you know, what are the big themes, and these are just examples of them, I took some of our short feedback last week, or at the last meeting, and kind of updated these a little bit, added a little bit more, switched some words, and then added, as you can see in some of the goals, so for the third goal, vibrant and thriving downtown, adding a direct reference to the downtown village plan, for resilient infrastructure and climate adaptation, adding a reference to the climate action plan. I think here, Wayne, to your point earlier, when we're even in the balanced growth and development, or vibrant and thriving downtown, that's where we can call out the dog bone working group, just like a lot of those recommendations, again, we want those documents to stand on their own, but for an example of a strategy that can, you know, come from the vibrant and thriving downtown village, just as an example, is to implement the downtown village plan, and we can call out some specific things that, you know, can not, don't necessarily have to live only in the downtown plan, whether it's like a zoning use, 'cause that's something that the comp plan can tackle as well. So we can, while we can call out larger themes or larger policy items from the downtown village plan, having a goal that says, you know, implement the downtown village plan, implement the recommendations from the climate action plan, or like, lay the groundwork to allow for the infrastructure work for the dog bone working group. So that's kind of how we make that connection from goals to more concrete strategies, if that makes sense. With that being said, these are the, the goals that I pulled out, so, David, I know you said you had thoughts on some of these.
In particular, diverse and affordable housing options, I might make some changes to that, I, I might say improve housing availability and diversity, rather than saying affordable, may not be popular among some people, but I'm not sure we need a capital A affordable, or a small a affordable, because, you know, it's gonna be confusing. So let's call it workforce housing, or something else perhaps, aside from affordable, that would be my opinion. Not to, not to completely discourage affordable housing, but not to promise it either.
What about just a range of housing?
That's right, yeah, yeah, so-
I mean, if you just strike affordable and just say including workforce and mixed, mixed income-
Exactly what I did.
Yeah.
Yep. And I, in, in the, in the header is improved housing availability, or housing diversity, maybe it should be improved housing diversity and availability, more different types of homes and more of them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, we talk about housing all the time, so maybe that's why we always come back to that existing bullet point from the 2011 comp plan, but I do also think that that's one of the best, that, that phrasing is actually quite good, I think.
Is this, that phrasing is from the 2011? I mean, this is phrasing, I'm just-
Well, it's, it's the one that's, the one that, it was part of the staff report, right? Like it's that Freeport should support-
Right, a range.
A range, yeah, exactly, I can't, I don't have it verbatim memorized, but, but yeah, I think, I, I agree that just because affordable is, can kind of trend-
Has some meaning in it.
Yeah, it's got some, it has some, some baggage with it, right? 'Cause it can be a defined term with specific meaning that people get fired up about, and it's not that we wanna discourage.
No, we just, we just don't wanna promise it, you know, or wanna, you know, say that that is our, and our, our goal is, is capital A affordable housing.
Unless it's defined, you don't know who it's affordable for, I mean, it could be affordable for millionaires.
Right, right. Other than that, you know, I mean, I understand environmental stewardship and, and resilient infrastructure, climate adaption are, are different, but I, I wonder if they, if they are similar enough to, to fall under the same goal?
I was having second thoughts on that yesterday.
Well, I'm not, I, I, I don't necessarily disagree, but I, I do also see room for two different goals that might serve different, 'cause I think, and which sort of ties into my, one of my comments about the environmental stewardship one, it, I, I think putting sustainable land use and then especially if it's sustainable development right after those goals is, strikes me as a little bit of a disconnect, because we're saying we wanna protect and enhance Freeport's natural resources by prioritizing conservation and habitat connectivity and sustainable develop, like, sustainable development is a great and worthy goal, but it is, like, any development is going to be, has to be balanced against prioritizing conservation and habitat connectivity, and so, but just by listing them one after another, it sort of makes it, it sort of blurs that tension, if you know what I mean. So I think it, I think we have to find a way to separate, I think the environmental stewardship could be a focus on conservation, on, you know, habitat connectivity and preservation, you know, open space, resource conservation, like, I don't know, water quality issues, that kind of thing.
And are you saying like, let the sustainable land use and development live in the balanced growth and development?
Yes, exactly. That would've been a faster way to say that. Take it out of that one and put it in the other one. So I think, but I, I, it, it may be worth finding a way to call out that this has to exist alongside sustainable development, I just think it can't be like in a list like that, like, we have to somehow separate it. You know, so, so make it clear that while we have a goal of developing resilient infrastructure and pursuing sustainable development, you know, the, these are not, like, you don't do it, they're sort of different parts of the puzzle, not like-
Competing factors?
Yeah.
You don't want them to be, you know, against each other, but working together?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not being super clear on this.
That's fine.
I'll have to, I'll have to think a little bit harder on the, on the wordsmithing part of it, but I think a good start could be like, the environmental stewardship, protect and, and enhance Freeport's natural resources by prioritizing conservation, you know, preserving open space and habitat connectivity, and then promote, promote practices that safeguard the community's ecological health for current and future generations while pursuing sustainable development goals, or something, or like, while pursuing sustainable development, we're always keeping in mind safeguarding the community's ecological health. Again, not exactly flowing off my tongue, but-
Yeah, I, I think the, the reason why it'd be hard to articulate is that sometimes these goals are in competition in places, and I, I think they're both desired outcomes, they're both things that the community at, at large has, has said that they want, and a big part of this planning work is trying to figure out some of that balance, and, you know, where can they, where do we need to prioritize one over the other, and where should we be try, trying to like have, have them coexist? And when I, when I looked at these earlier in the week, the environmental stewardship is really more about the natural environment and natural systems, the resilient infrastructure and climate adaptation to me was more about like the built environment and physical infrastructure. I, I think it's okay, you know, my, my two cents is that it's okay to, to have some goals around environmental stewardship and have goals around growth and development with the understanding what we're gonna talk about next, is the future land use plan is gonna help provide some guidance on where do you prioritize one over the other.
By the way, what's an example of resilient infrastructure? What infrastructure, infrastructure does- Because the bridges and things are the DOT, you know, Freeport doesn't build much, what are we, so what are we talking about there?
Could be anything from sewer, sewer systems that are designed to, you know, handle more higher capacity rain events, developing low-impact design standards for like different types of development, you know, in a growth area and outside a growth area, looking at like the coastal health, like what type of infrastructure does the town need to invest in to preserve certain parks or spaces along the coast?
Would it implicate building codes, things like that?
Well, there's, there's a limit to what those goals can do, but in, in a conversation about updating policies and procedures, or with certain requirements, or if you're doing design standards, like, you know, resilient infrastructure could be like, how do we allow solar, or on individual homes or solar fields, thinking, looking at different forms of energy? And the reason this directly relates to the climate action plan is because a lot of that resiliency, a lot of those planning efforts have already been done, and have been identified in the climate action plan. And it's also, you know, it's a, it's an evolving field, the, how storm resilience, people are approaching building different sewer systems, that's just the example, and they keep going to, looking at impervious surfaces and pavements and, it's a, it's a really wide, it's, it's broad, but it, it's a changing field as well.
Are those, are those examples enumerated anywhere in the, in the plan? Just so people know exactly what you mean when you say resilient infrastructure?
So I'm like, where do I go to find out what resilient infrastructure means, you know?
I think the, yeah, that's, that's what will be, that's like kind of that next portion, like, we're just identifying, the resilient infrastructure in the plan, we'll kind of expand, expand on that concept as a goal, and then when you add the policies and strategies, whether they're from that, and we'll have examples for March, but I didn't wanna go, get too far ahead of the board in providing a bunch of examples.
I just meant ultimately, there'll be-
Yeah, again, it's-
Indication, and we'll be clear what we're talking about.
Exactly.
So like, I imagine one of the policies or strategy recommendations coming out of that would be like low-impact development, stormwater infrastructure, you know, so like a rain garden or something, so that's probably identified in the climate action plan already, but could be its own thing, so that would be an example, and then that would just be like fall down from this goal into the policy recommendation.
So how does, you know, staying on that side of, what is sustainable land use? You know, land use is land use, if it's farming or open space-
Andrew, is your mic, is your mic on?
Yeah.
You repeat that, sorry, for the-
Yeah, I was just saying, and how do we find, how do we define sustainable-
Yeah, I was just saying, and how do we find, how do we define sustainable land use?
Yeah, I mean, it's not something we, it's more of a concept that we can define specifically about what do we mean, what does Freeport mean by sustainable land use? It's land use that can support different types of goals, whether it's economic sustainability, economic diversity, building, allowing for coastal waterfront development, or making sure that you're in, the investments the town is making or the uses allowed in a certain area aren't, you know, long-term impact. You're not putting an industrial, industrial building next to a residential home. In terms of, in the environmental, any environmental procedures, the sustainable land use is just ensuring that, you know, you're protecting habitat. Like, a lot of the open space conservation stuff could also fall into that category of like how you're preserving land, where you're preserving it from a townwide approach, and how that relates to climate goals and things like that.
I was just saying, you know, every, I mean, the whole idea of a growth area versus the rural areas, I mean, that's sustainable land use and focusing growth in an area, so you're not spreading. Spreading out development, right? But, and we talk a lot here about focusing downtown and, you know, building like a denser core to, with the balance of conserving land elsewhere to create less of a footprint, so it's less impervious, less, you know, runoff, less environmental impacts, you know, better efficiency of infrastructure. Like, that would fall under sustainable development, you know, but then sustainable land use, you know, within the.
You offset it. I mean, what you're doing downtown is, you know, I just think it's a, it's just a funny word to use, sustainable.
It kind of explains it in the next sentence, too, that says, promote practices that safeguard the community's ecological health for current and future generations. So it's ensuring that like the, the growth of the town or the preservation, conservation of the town, you know, can last.
It's a fair point, I think, that it's, it's a spectrum, right? And to the point. And, right, and to the extent that you're going to develop a piece of land, I mean, there's a certain point of view that would say, well, that piece of land was better off before you put a four-story building on it, you know? So in that sense, maybe it's, it's not sustainable, but.
But I think the missing thing there is, it meets the needs of current.
Right, no, no, I'm not saying, I think we just have to, I guess, I guess what I'm, where I would come down is I'm comfortable with the, the fact that there's some ambiguity in the term. And I think it's sort of broadly understood that there's, there are better and worse ways to go about all of this. If we take the really high-level view, like, it might be better for the town, or we hope it is better for the town in the long term, to concentrate our growth in certain areas and maintain habitat connectivity and maintain as much open space, and that that is more sustainable than a different approach that we could theoretically take in an alternate universe. And I guess I'm sort of more or less okay with that ambiguity.
I think a really good example and feedback we've heard at the Future Land Use Workshop is when we presented one of the models that showed kind of like an octopus arms leading out of the growth town with the highlighted yellow that we had talked about. The comment we saw time and again on that poster board was, this is sprawl. And when you talk about urban sprawl, the growth along like corridors, that's just, you know, strip malls and development that just kind of keeps expanding out, that's to some unsustainable land use, that you're not preserving, you're just letting people build along like a Route One corridor. If you saw, in a world where there is no dog bone working group, there is no growth area down there, it's just kind of the current growth area, people can start putting up car dealerships all along Route One and.
Get permitted.
Yeah, I mean, at a certain point, is that the type of growth that you really want that, you know, talks about protecting, conserving some of the open space on the ledge side of Route One South? Looking at, is this helping with housing goals and that type of sustainable land use is ensuring and going forward.
Strip malls is a boogeyman and a red herring in Freeport. We've heard that since the 70s, since they put zoning in. Oh my God, we have to stop strip malls on Route One South. Nobody's come to town and built one. You know, so.
Our other people, like, it's kind of interesting, it's like, one end of the table is okay with it, and the other end of the table might be more comfortable with some different definition or something.
Well, no, I just, I just think it's hard to define these things, that's all, you know, what is sustainable? We're working on a 10-year plan.
I have no disagreement with that statement whatsoever. It is hard to define.
You know, so, so we're sitting here saying, this is what we want to do for the next 10 years. You know, we're having a hard time getting a guy to come build housing in the downtown. And now we're worried about strip malls on Route One, which is a boogeyman. I've lived there all my life. I've heard this, we've been, we've been zoned to death because of fear of strip malls.
There's lots of different kinds of sustainability. I think in, in this context where it's in the environmental stewardship goal, that's, that's the context, that's the approach.
I'm not going to fight about it forever, but I just think it's, it's very hard to sit here and say, okay, these are our goals, we want to be sustainable. What does that mean? I want to be sustainable, does that mean?
You can go get yourself a college degree in sustainability.
I know, I know, I still won't know what it means.
You know, it's, it's a term, it's defined, it's, well.
I realize that, but, you know, we got laypeople sitting here trying to figure out, you know, how do I define sustainable?
I think my takeaway here is like, when we come with policy, if the policies don't support it, then we can beef it up and talk about what sustainable land use looks like.
I mean, maybe, maybe Andrew's point would help, help clarify my own thinking on how to rewrite this very first sentence and just remove the word sustainable and say something like, protect and enhance Freeport's natural resources by prioritizing conservation and habitat connectivity alongside development. And then you could say alongside, you know, development that respects or that prioritizes, or you could put the development up, up, up front.
I think that's captured in the second goal, not, not to divert, but.
Yeah, no, that's true, it, it.
Like, and I know that word.
I mean, they both go, they sort of like cross-reference each other.
If the words are in there, we just got to be able, so when I sit down and read this, or somebody sits down to read it, they should be able to say, okay, how do I fit into sustainable? Or how do I not fit in sustainable? And that's got to be clear.
Yeah, well, that's, the nod is the part, the point I was just going to make, you know, maybe the intent would be more clear if we stated what constitutes non-sustainable development, like, what are we trying to prohibit?
I think, I think we can take that feedback and rework that a little bit so that the intent's a little more clear, so it fits into that environmental stewardship goal. It's a fair point, it is one of those words that's hard to define, has lots of meanings depending on how you use it. But I think the intent here was for it to be more environmental sustainability, so we can.
Yeah, I also think when we add some policies and examples to it, it'll explain like kind of those metrics as well.
I just don't want it being used as a whip against somebody, that's all, you know? I mean, somebody comes in, they just don't like their project, you're not sustainable. Well, what's that mean? It's what I say it is, you know? And whoever gets to be, sit up here and decide what sustainable is, is, it's got to be, work for both sides of the table. Somebody's got to be able to understand it on both sides of the table, it can't just be personal interpretation.
Right, and I think.
That's all I'm trying, I'm just trying to get to clear language that the applicant can understand.
Yeah, and I, and I think when we get to the, for all, I think that carries through for, you know, what does accessible transportation mean? What does, like, even workforce housing and changing climate, like, a lot of these things are vague, but when we add policies and we, you know, incorporate these further into the plan, it'll clarify, but Ben and I can go in and clean up and make sure that we're.
But when you write these policies and you say they're part of sustainable, you still got to get back to the first part, what is sustainable? Your policies can say they're sustainable, but until you start with a definition of, this is red, okay, all my cars are red, you know, what is sustainable? And then what are the policies that fit under that sustainable? Not just saying, these policies are sustainable, and not defining sustainable. I mean, it's sort of the other end of the coin. I say these policies are sustainable, okay? Still, what is sustainable? Not just the policies, because you say they are, we have to define it first and then, and then make the policies fit. So that's just where I'm coming from.
Well, any thoughts on the other goals, the ones we haven't talked about? One of the comments we took about the arts, which we, we added to the vibrant and thriving downtown, was a dynamic hub of activity and culture. But I think when we add more, like a specific call out to arts and performance in some capacity, we'll bring it back into the vibrant and thriving downtown village. But also, that can be captured in public spaces and community connection as well, because I don't think art should be, you know, held bound to the downtown village. It's arts everywhere, I guess, is the, is the phrase. Yeah, any more thoughts on these goals? Anything that's, you know, not in the vision or general broad ideas that aren't captured, or future policies or minor things that you don't see in these goals? Or does this seem like a good, you know, starting point to get a menu of policies?
I think it's a great starting point. I think it's come a long way from the goals at the workshop. I do have another minor, minor sort of question or point on the enhancing public spaces. I wonder if it's worth specifying where walkable neighborhoods would exist, just because I could see, given all the sort of thoughts about sprawl, I mean, the goal, at least as we, at least as I understand it, is not that we want the whole town to be covered in walkable neighborhoods, or that every neighborhood should have like.
Sidewalk.
Its own sidewalk and sort of store and everything. So I think being a little bit more specific about where those neighborhoods are would benefit us.
Yeah, there's a density and a land use component that goes along with walkability that we haven't really talked about putting everywhere. Just one minor like word change, I think, it's the downtown vision plan, right? Not downtown village.
It's downtown vision, yeah, you're right.
Yep.
There's a preserved here in the balanced growth and development section. I disagree with.
Which ones are?
Balanced growth and development, there's a, the last word is preserved. I'm advocating for conserved, there you go.
The last question, or maybe not the last, but one that's coming to me now that I haven't really thought about, the, the fact that you've put these as bullet points sort of implies that the order doesn't matter, or that they're not meant to be like ranked, one through.
There's no priority, and I think that's throughout.
I think that's, and I think that's great, I think that's the way it should be, I wouldn't change that. However, I think you also, just like, because we read top to bottom.
Should I alphabetize it?
Uh, that's an interesting, I hadn't thought about that, I almost thought about.
It's random.
It's like.
Unbiased?
Almost no matter what we do, like, we're not going to change the fact that whichever one you read first, like, somebody's going to say, well, why is environmental stewardship first? And another person's going to say, you know, oh, it absolutely should be first, and, you know, like, why is resilient infrastructure and climate adaptation, like, you know what I mean? I, I wonder, I guess you could kind of go two ways. We could say, we could stick to the story that, no, this is random and it does it, you could alphabetize it, I think that's a decent idea. Or we could have a discussion as a board, maybe not tonight, but like another, where we say, this is the order that we think, and it doesn't necessarily have to be like a strict, like, order of importance per se, but this is the order that we think flows best, or this is the order that we think makes the most sense. And I want, so I think it's worth maybe having that discussion at some point and coming up with.
I can take a stab at, you know, putting them in a, a way that reflects the vision statement, the way the vision statement is crafted, and kind of go down. Like, I can see the vibrant and thriving downtown as well as the resilient infrastructure dropping to the bottom two, as those are more like focused and specific to stuff. But I'll take a look and maybe, that's a good conversation for the board in March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I think roughly speaking, it's actually a pretty good order. I like the fact that environmental stewardship and balanced growth and development are both right up top, but I think those are two good things to have toward the top. So it's not like I'm trying to, I'm just, I'm just raising the bigger point that like somebody at some point is going to say.
Are these a priority?
Yeah, why is, what's the order, where's the order coming from?
I think balanced growth and development is much more general than the rest of the topics.
I think that should be number one, followed by environmental stewardship.
Yeah, but I'm also saying, I'm not sure that it means much on a specific basis, because it's so general. I mean, what's being developed and, you know, where is the growth happening? I mean, it's, it's just so general.
We can be, I think it's good to be mindful, and if we're going to put an order, not in terms of importance, but in terms of as it reads to the folks where, you know, for someone who is reading it, it's going to be like, why is, like, housing option's the first one and not this? It's also a losing battle in the long run, but I think it's important that we can be mindful and intentful with that decision. And that's, that's home, the first piece of homework, because everyone can rank it. Any last thoughts on these goals?
And when you say last thoughts, it's last thoughts for tonight.
Yes, we got it. So I just, before we go into the next part, what we will be doing is kind of going through some of our previous conversations on the inventory chapters and pulling some, you know, I have some notes that we made about, about housing, some recommendations from Jeff Bean. But we also have some of the Climate Action Plan elements, downtown vision plan elements, that we can start adding as policies. But really, in March, I'm hoping to go down and start saying, this is what we want to do. For each goal, come with four or five policy items, go through some of the inventory, good time to go through some of the inventory chapters to kind of remind you of like what conversations we had. I have my own notes that I will kind of incorporate and send over some policies, at least, I'm aiming for about two weeks ahead, to give you guys some guidance in developing your own policies, but really of what you heard from other people, what we've heard at workshops and things like that. So we're going to be taking these goals and putting, from this, I'll make the changes, and, but generally, we're going to be keeping the categories. So anything that you feel, you know, should be an action item can start be, being placed in there. Now we're going to the fun part. But before we go, we presented, so just as a, we're going into the future land use map right now. So we've presented, we've prepared you with a updated narrative and a future land use map that shows three growth areas. As I wrote it, there's a fourth that is the waterfront, the working waterfront resiliency area, and I'll go explain all of these in just a second. That's something we have to be mindful about, growth areas is how it relates to LD 2003. So after talking with Kyle, we're going to be a little bit more intentful with how we're going to discuss the, that as a growth area, but we'll come back to that when we go through it. But we've taken some of the feedback from the planning board, from staff, and from the Future Land Use Workshop in November, worked with ALA, Cedar Landscape Architects, to develop a new updated growth area that's a little bit more refined, so I will go to it now. It's a little bit more refined in scope, so it's not as wide on Route One South, doesn't go as far south. We cut off the northern bounds of Route One and really focused on that balanced and developed growth. So at the core is the village, what we have, oops, sorry, what we have as the downtown village growth area, sorry, I'm just pulling up my narrative, perfect. The downtown village area, growth area, which we have discussed in some capacity, we have the dog bone growth area, which is the area that's identified in the dog bone working group. And then the third is a Route One South growth area, which we talked a little bit about last week. And then the fourth, the fourth transition area that, as I discussed as a growth area, but after further, is just another focus area, is the working waterfront resiliency area. That is something that we haven't discussed, but I did want to kind of walk through each one as it relates to the narrative before we jump into it. Any general questions on the future land use map right now? Or should I continue just walking, walking through it? Carry on. So the downtown village growth area, I don't really need to explain too much. I think that's really focused on the downtown vision plan, where we want to see non-residential activities, increased density, as we say in the vision, the vibrant downtown hub. So more economic opportunities, diversity of jobs, higher density housing, mixed-use buildings, kind of what we envision as the downtown plan, what's laid out in the downtown vision plan. We talk a lot about public spaces, essential services, dining, retail, but also important infrastructure developments, like sidewalks, bike lanes, transit stops, and really creating that downtown that Freeport wants. So that's how the narrative is crafted. The dog bone growth area, as Wayne asked earlier, is really based on some of those recommendations coming from the dog bone working group. So it identifies that area, talks about changes in the minimum land per dwelling unit requirements, adding that, or enhancing that existing infrastructure, and as it's proximate to downtown, kind of being an extension of the downtown that Freeport, with targeted infrastructure investments, and good for growth. A lot of, really straight out of the dog bone working group recommendations. And the Route One South growth area is what we kind of discussed as that third growth area along the Route One South quarter. We took some of the feedback about how far, what, how far south do we want to go? How do we go from growth area and transition from that Route One border at Yarmouth into a. Route 1 border at Yarmouth into a, you know, increased activity into the Dogbone, rather than getting to that main beer co-cut-off and just being like, alright, now we're in downtown Freeport. So giving some sort of opportunity for a mixed-use environment gateway type, at, starting at that Route 1 and Old County Road intersection, so on the Route 1 side of 295. Still focused on, talks about that balance, so preserving nearby rural landscapes. But again, we're talking about preventing sprawling strip development, so not letting it go wild, but allowing for well-designed neighborhoods. You can envision some street networks that kind of go inland, and, you know, we say complementing the downtown village and the Dogbone growth areas, that allows, you know, a little additional opportunity for economic or in housing. One thing we did attach, which I will jump over to real quick, for that Route 1 South growth area, is that we had ALA put together kind of a sketch, a concept plan, of something, what we have. So this is a Google Maps of that intersection, so that's what it is today. And we had Nick create, Nick Aceto create, kind of what would a low-intensity development look like down there after, you know, 15 years of sidewalks and then other investments? And he came up with a sketch like this, so showing, you know, very similar to the downtown Freeport, but a little bit less in scale, so smaller houses that aren't like right up, or buildings that aren't right next to each other, still spaced out, still walkable, so talking, bringing the connection to downtown through the Dogbone down to this area, kind of extending down Route 1 South. What we've heard is that people have tried to develop Route 1 South, or conceptually, think about how you grow, what do you do there? And I think what we're trying to do with this visualization is saying, with appropriate investment in infrastructure, this isn't going to happen overnight. One developer isn't going to, you know, spring up an entire village over here. But over time, with increased investment, you can see that something like this could potentially exist over there, with, you know, creating the appropriate land use and village and zoning, and stuff like that. And then Nick added some details here, promoting a sense of community, storefronts on the street with parking in the rear, mixed-use retail office space, similar to that historic farm-scale building. Yeah. And then, to jump back to the map, one thing we did add that really wasn't discussed, but when I was going through some of my notes, one thing we had talked about is a diverse economy as it relates to the marine economy and coastal resiliency. I went down the, up and down the coast of Freeport, and looked at where some of these deep-water activities are stationed, and it's really only Porter's Landing and South Freeport. So adding these as a working waterfront area kind of gives another, another opportunity for specific targeted growth at that waterfront. What we've heard in some of our conversations is, when we talk about economic diversity, what is often left behind is the marine economy. And I think there's some challenges based off of some of the public feedback we have, the some that Kyle shared with you earlier, that there's a tough balance, there's a desire to keep South Freeport the way it is, so putting this in a, in a little, in a new comp, an identified comp plane area. But what, the way we crafted that in the narrative, is an area that can actively support commercial fishing, aquaculture, boat building, and other marine industry, industries, with the appropriate investments. And Climate Action Plan talks about some reinforcements to the piers, docks, you know, with sea level rise and preparing for that, but also improving pedestrian bicycle connectivity to that area, so if people live down there, can bike or walk there. But also, you know, implement zoning that is not necessarily for South Freeport, but some of those waterfront areas to allow for an expanse of user, allow for a future use or expansion of marine activity. So that's the elevator pitch for it. But I did want to highlight that while these, this area is for the working waterfront, we are mindful that we want to increase economic opportunity while retaining its historic and residential character. So this is not specifically targeted to all of South Freeport, but how South Freeport and Porter's Landing serve as kind of another, an opportunity for economic development. So that's the, that's the updated plan, the future land use plan, so I'd love to hear your feedback.
Just while we're talking about the working waterfront.
Yeah, we can start there.
I mean, one thing that jumps out to me, Porter's Landing is kind of an odd spot for a working waterfront in a lot of ways. I mean, it has the existing use of Falls Point right there. It is not deep water in there, you know, I think
Title.
It's been like basically dredged out in one little section, so the barge can sit there, and the rest of it is. I suspect it's a relatively ecologically sensitive marsh up there, the headwaters of the Herseca River, and it's a sort of a historic neighborhood as well. I, I think that the marine uses that are there now provide a lot of value to, I mean, they're, you know, Carter serves tons of people in Freeport, maybe he could be located somewhere else, I don't know. But I, I think that putting, by putting an emphasis on that location as like a working waterfront location, we might be setting a false expectation for what that area really can support, just because it doesn't, you know, without like extensive dredging or something, which
I was looking at this with a really one-minded look, of like, where is their existing marine infrastructure?
Yeah. And I, yeah, and I think, I mean, I am happy to see that grandfathered in and continue to, you know, I don't feel super strongly that it should like go away, but I also think that
There's not much room for expansion.
There's not a huge amount of space for expansion there. I think it's probably better, I, I think the boat ramp, you know, the public access is important. I mean, selfishly, I use that ramp all the time, and it's a great place to access the water.
It doesn't need to be part of working waterfront to be a good public access point, so.
Yep. So, that's, I could go on, but that's my, that's sort of my
If somebody's doing oyster stuff out of there, you know?
But that's not so much, doesn't really require infrastructure, really.
Oh, but it still makes it a working waterfront.
Yeah, and that's fine to put something in there that I think that protects access for a variety of uses, whether it's somebody launching a paddleboard, or a, you know, a boat to go dig, and whether it's worms or oysters, or whatever. I mean, I, so, but I think like, building up more infrastructure in that area might be a hot potato.
Perfect. Good feedback.
I'd agree with that.
How is it in, or, do you have your hand up, or?
Nope.
How does, how about that element as it relates to South Freeport, where there is a little bit more built-in infrastructure? There's not much room, that being said.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think we want to encourage the marine economy down there, but I don't know that we need to encourage a lot of growth.
I think they can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty dense neighborhood as it is, so I think, to the extent that walkability, bikeability, like, I don't think anybody would object to improving the pedestrian access parking situation, bikeability down that super steep hill that's like very dangerous and often has somebody trying to like back up it, you know, because there's no parking down there. So, I mean, I think there are ways that we could improve the connectivity and improve that area, and maybe it gets even, not all at once, but gets denser over time, maybe, I mean, it just naturally, like, if we didn't do anything, that possibility exists now, like with LD 2003, right? Everybody down there could put an ADU in their yard if they wanted to, or build. So, we could see increased pressure on the existing roads.
The intent here is for like a working waterfront, but if that
But it's
theme, we can capture that elsewhere, too.
I think, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I don't have a problem with that staying as like a working waterfront designated growth area. If people can find ways to sort of put more stuff in the same land area that doesn't negatively impact the river, the ecology down there, then sure.
Yeah, because I was looking at, where is like a new place for that, and I don't think there really
There isn't one.
There isn't, so.
Yeah.
So that would be a key
That'd be a key thing, though. It wouldn't technically be a growth area. It would be like a, it would be identified as a distinct
It's a focus area.
Yeah, thing on the planet.
Because if we say it's a growth area, that has
Boom, other implications, yeah.
Yep.
That was a Kyle, Kyle thought that right away, Kyle and Caroline did.
Yes, no, fair point. That's, that was not my intent, was to designate.
But it also lends itself to that, that concern that the board, that, you know, maybe there's not a ton of room for growth, but it's identifying that it's a unique situation there.
You don't want to
With other possible policies.
I think what it also does is, not to use the word preserve, but if you have that as an area, you can kind of keep, you can really preserve the existing use, and if it's succeed, if an area like that is succeeding in protecting the existing use from enclosure, from different development pressures, I think that's also good, too.
And I think, I mean, this, like, this third bullet point under guiding principles for growth areas, again, I acknowledge this is not a growth area, but I think pedestrian and environmental enhancements certainly would apply, or could apply, to that sort of focus area, about how can we improve, how can we maintain the existing uses and the existing character, but also improve access and infrastructure?
Yeah, and I think with some of the public comment we received, you know, not saying that this one public comment is going to influence that, but if we take away Porter's Landing from this type of area, say it's the South Freeport working waterfront resiliency area, that's where we can call it. We were talking about where the walkable neighborhoods earlier were and identifying it, and through the narrative, we can also say that while this is, this area is focused on, you know, protecting the working waterfront, giving future opportunity if the situation arises, it also can benefit South Freeport in that connectivity way. So, I think, it's definitely a work in progress, because I, we threw it together kind of as like, oh, maybe we should make a nod to the coastal economy in the future land use map, because there aren't many areas for it, so.
Yeah.
I think one of the other things related to this is, we've heard all the way through that, that South Freeport is a real gem in the community, and people love living there, people love going there. And we wanted to think about opportunities to make sure that that stays relatively the same in the future. The, part of this planning work is, where do you want to focus change? Where do you want to focus new investments? But the flip side of that coin is, where do you want to minimize change? And where do you want to keep things the same? And, you know, we talked about South Freeport as a place that probably should be the same, but to Sam's point, to what extent are there opportunities for some gentle infill or development around the edges, or things that would help support maybe some additional non-residential things happening in that area, in addition to the waterfront itself, to help support the businesses that are there, or new businesses potentially?
Yeah, that's a very, it's a sensitive part of town, right?
Stop that fight, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, that's well put. I was thinking, I mean, I know it's been floated before, like, what about a design review area in South Freeport Village? I suspect that that would have some strong opinions, probably on both sides. I'm sure there's people who, you know, I live in the design review area, as everybody knows, and I'm happy to be in the design review area, as much of a pain as it can be sometimes, but I think it's, so it could cut either way, but I think if that, I mean, if you're, if you're going for preservation, or if you're trying to, if you're trying to limit change, and you're trying to keep, you know, the character intact, a design review or some sort of ordinance like that, some sort of overlay, as much as we all love overlays, could work to that benefit, or to that, could work toward that goal. But I think
There was
It's going to be, yeah.
We had, you know how we had like the neighborhood Chickenpox Future Land Use Map that we showed, like, different neighborhood nodes all over? When I was standing at that board at the Future Land Use Workshop, people were talking about South Freeport and Cushing, and the Cushing Briggs area, not as like, they were like, I don't want it to be a growth area, that was their general idea, but acknowledging it as that, like, special area above other smaller neighborhoods or communities, that South Freeport kind of stands, it's unique, it's a gem.
It's the only other part of Freeport that really has a walkable neighborhood with amenities other than, you know, I don't know, like, it has the store. I mean, that's it, right? It's got a store.
Church, school, and store.
Yeah, a church, a school, and a store. And so that's, and
It's a city.
And, yeah, right.
And a post office.
Sure, exactly, it does have a post office. And the fact, and you can walk
They have a restaurant.
There's a, is there a restaurant?
Well, it's the Herseca
Oh, Herseca, okay, seasonal, but yeah, it's a restaurant. Cash only, too, what a pain. The, I think, yeah, it, it deserves some sort of special recognition.
Yeah.
I would put the Porter's Landing neighborhood in that same category, though, too, wouldn't you?
Porter's Landing?
Yeah, that neighborhood there.
In the feel of it, maybe, but it doesn't have the store or the restaurant, or the
No, but it's got that feel, that, you know
It's got the historic
Historic feel, that, you know.
Yeah.
I think when, when we're, again, I don't know what scenario number was, but one of the ideas behind that one with neighborhoods, and we over-neighborhood, just to kind of get that concept out there, but I think in our internal team discussions with, with ALA, we, we said, you know, South Freeport is South Freeport, but where would, where could you put another, where could you envision another place like that? And we talked about, you know, other big intersections, we talked about other parts of town, but Porter Landing was, was really the only place, like, you know, in the future, with some zoning, or, you know, maybe there could be some kind of store, or restaurant, or something at that location.
Well, I sort of, I actually sort of liked the North Freeport idea there, too, where there's that, because there's a little store up there, right?
There's already a store.
Yeah. And I mean, that would take quite a change, whereas these other ones are already closer with, at least with the density of housing, where you've got, I don't know, 50 maybe in Porter's, are there 50 houses in the Porter's Landing area that are sort of walkable within?
I would think so.
And there's probably 100 in South Freeport, maybe? 100 houses within a 10-minute walkable radius?
10-minute walk, maybe 100, yeah.
Yeah, so
If you count parts of Pine Street and parts of South Freeport Road Inn.
Yeah, yeah.
My car line was about to give us like the exact numbers, and I was like, that's impressive.
My best advice is just to leave South Freeport alone, because I remember when they wanted to run sidewalks down Main Street, and they had an uproar, because nobody wanted their trees cut down. They, oh, it'd be great to have sidewalks, and you people have to have sidewalks, because it's, you can't walk in the street. Then they want to run tour buses down there, because it's such a great neighborhood, and we got to go to the waterfront. I'd just leave them alone. They regulate themselves pretty well. There's enough money down there, people aren't going to tear their houses up. When you pay a million or a million two for a house, you're not going to jam an ADU out behind. You want to live on your own lot. They self-regulate pretty well down there.
That was like 2018 pricing, Andrew. I think you're going to spend more than that these days.
Well, no, no, they're flipping down there for about that, you know?
Some of them, maybe.
Some of them are, depends on how old it is and where it is, but, you know, if you're on the waters, it costs obviously a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they self-regulate pretty well down there.
How does that jive with that earlier concept of a waterfront area? Like, when you say, you know, maybe, maybe we don't need to spend too much time thinking about additional uses, or where exactly the boundaries or borders of this place are, infill, or those kinds of things, but does that leave some room for like a working waterfront type focus like Charles was describing for South Freeport?
The oyster farms are growing. There, there is a lot of commerce going
We've heard it before, and now we're kind of at that point where it's like, you know?
What's Freeport owned down there? We got a 50-foot wide dock, or whatever it is down there. Got a marina on one side and a restaurant, and a marina on the other side. Same guy owns both marinas. And I don't know what you got to do to expand a marina these days, but I don't think it's easy. Time you pay for the, time you pay the bottom lease and go to DEP and everybody else to get an expansion. I mean, I'm not saying it's not a good idea to plan for, but I don't know where you're going to go. I just don't know where the expansion is going to be. I mean, we need to make sure we don't overkill it down there. And we really need to, you know, years ago, we was talking about buying one of the marinas before it was sold, and having that for Freeport people, but it got, it got sold. So, Freeport didn't buy it. So, realistically, I don't think there's much room for expansion of, you know, we're limited to how many moorings we have in the harbor.
Yeah. And it's also just like what Rosemary was saying, it's like, as aquaculture and things that don't need like a permanent presence on the marina, it's just, if there's more trucks coming in every day, or people looking to park and being able to expand those services, that just kind of gives services, that just kind of gives a little bit more of that ability for Freeport to invest in it, because if, if it's identified in the comp plan saying, if the need arises, you can do it, it's easier to say, oh, it's in the comp plan and the town can commit to the, commit the resources to that. But if it's not, and talking about the infrastructure investments, like, well, it's not in the comp plan, so we have to prioritize investment elsewhere.
I understand, I understand, but, you know, that's why I think Porter's Landing could be good for aquaculture, because you don't need, you know, I mean, I think that should be part of a working waterfront list because it means a lot of things, you know.
People just want to think about it a little more?
I'm curious, I guess the other, yeah, I guess maybe just understanding what, and probably not going to do this tonight, but just thinking through what sorts of protections might be necessary in the future, or what are the sort of scenarios that might require some, some of this planning? Like, what could happen if we don't do this growth, or not, sorry, I keep saying growth area. It's not a growth area. What, what might we see in a sort of worst-case scenario or, you know, even a middle-of-the-road scenario?
I think if it's, if it's not there, then it's going to be business as usual, and that's, it's going to be, well, if you want to do more deep-water stuff there, you can't.
But what sorts of opportunities might we miss if we don't, does, I mean?
It's the, it's rooted in the economic diversity conversation, in that there is a lot of people, not just on the planning board, but in the community, who were highlighting the, you know, growing aquaculture, growing oyster farming, different types of uses that could, you know, expand from there. So if those become a big part of Freeport's economy, this would allow for, you know, better parking structures or-
Yeah, I think access is really the part of it that comes, that-
Limiting factor.
Yeah, that, that sort of keeps coming back for me is like, if there's a way to put the need to maintain access and the infrastructure to make it practically possible, not just like, oh, yeah, there's a boat ramp, why can't you use it? It's like, well, because I can't park, you know, within two miles of it, or because I can't, there's nowhere to put my trailer, or because I can't, you know, like those sorts of things, I think.
I think a lot, what I was looking at, and not being familiar with like the extent of the marine economy in Freeport, I was looking for down, literally went up and down, and I was like, so they're talking about marine economy, but where, where is it? And then I was like, oh, if it's only in these two areas, and what I'm hearing, it's really only in one area.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of big infrastructure, it's only one, although I think a lot of, Andrew, you probably know better than I, there are people who make their living from the water who use Porter's Landing regularly. I mean, there are trailers down there year-round for people who are out on the water.
I was a working boatyard when I was a kid.
Yeah.
It was Emmy Dunnan's boatyard.
Yeah.
He's had all that now before, bought by the town.
The other access point is the boat launch at Winslow, which in some ways, well, it doesn't have the sort of obvious marine infrastructure of Porter's Landing sees a lot of use for similar activities. And I think a lot of, like, a lot of the aquaculture folks launch out of that, launch, I think, yeah. Yeah, because it's a lot closer to the, to the farms that are-
It's a shallow, though.
Yeah, it's tidal, but so is Porter's Landing.
That's right.
I mean, you can only get in there if like five feet above.
They don't need huge boats either, so.
Oh, I got, I got friends that launch the sailboats at Porter's Landing. They back right in with the tractor trailers.
Yeah, yeah, you can, I mean, at a high tide, there's six feet of water in there.
That was dredged, dredged, that was dredged pretty regularly, you know, 100 years ago. They were dredging in there all the time. They were launching schoones in there, big ships.
All right, is that an area we would want to extend to this? If we limited the scope of a working waterfront, is adding it-
I don't know what the practical implications would be for, I mean, because-
We can look into that for you.
Because Winslow is town-owned anyway, so it's not, I think it just, it's worth having that, yeah, Carolyn.
Sorry, I stepped out for a second. Yeah, Winslow has a special deed restriction. I believe it has to stay as a park or it would have to go back. There's very specific regulations that go along with that generous gift to the town of Freeport.
That's not the boat ramp, though.
I believe that boat ramp is part of that. I think you should flag it. I don't know if this is a discussion that is worth our time because of the covenants that go along with it.
No, but we think clambers and oyster people will launch on the boat ramp. I mean, there's no restriction against that.
Yeah, I'd have to verify that. I'm not aware that there is, but I know there's conditions that go along with the gift, so getting into talking about additional land uses or expanding that, we would need to look into that a little bit before, but I can bring back-
Yeah, I'm not concerned with that. I think it's just a, it's an important part of the town and maintaining the vibrancy of the working waterfront, that people who live here have access to the water. That's my, basically my point, my only point.
I mean, it's a separate zoning district, right? I mean, I think it, there's some-
The marine waterfront?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the two pockets. We have the one where Dunnan Boat Yard is, and then down Brewers in that area where you're talking.
So, you know, not having it as a growth area, but identifying it as a separate area where you could have special policy recommendations around, not growth, but improved access, or, you know, if someone was looking to do something, or a text amendment application came before the planning board, and, you know, maybe that waterfront policy recommendation helped to support a project in the future that's not necessarily growth, but it's, you know, fits in line with what's there.
Or whatever project.
To separate it from, you know, other-
Can't take away parking spots or can't-
We could also look at, you know, that kind of, I don't know what DEP calls that, I don't know if either of you know off the top of your head, like, we call it marine waterfront, but there's some other shoreland zone that goes along with it, which is why you can do more there. So I think if-
General Development District.
Yeah, I mean, we could really just, if it's supporting those as the general development district, we might want to go that route instead of getting it confused in growth, do we call it growth area, do we not call it growth area? Like, what else do we call it? Align it with DEP terms, which would allow us to support working waterfront, whatever that looks like for Freeport.
All right, we should probably move on from the waterfront area. I don't want to get too biased on that.
That's the newest one. So let's start from the top, I guess, with the downtown village.
That's fine, just a higher level question, just on tonight. We have about 45 minutes or so before our two hours are up, if I'm reading the clock correctly. Does that sound right? Are we roughly on track?
Yeah.
As far as, and it's just, is this what you guys, what you guys have to cover? Is this, and then we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so you have no like alarm bells ringing in your head for time?
Yeah, we're right on track.
All right, great.
We went through the first part much faster than I expected, so. Yeah, so the, I guess, opening, I will open this up to like word picking, because I think we're at that point where I want to make sure we're doing that, but generally feeling about the downtown village growth area, I feel like that's kind of the least divisive, but it's, is our approach to what a downtown village growth area, we say guided by the downtown vision plan, really putting that front and center in, in the goals and in the plan, but also in the narrative and saying like, we're not going to rewrite a lot of the work that's already been done.
One question I have, so this is comparing the village one to the Dogbone one. In the Dogbone one, you kind of get into more specifics, like eliminating land for dwelling requirements and adjusting building height restrictions, and I think that stuff came straight out of Dogbone, which I get, and I'm not, but that's like listed in this kind of narrative about the future land use area, whereas the village growth area didn't seem as specific in calling out like almost those like policy-level recommendations.
That was more of a author's choice because I don't know, the difference between a plan and then that report is saying that if the Dogbone, I don't know if it's adopted as a plan officially, the, it is?
I thought it was.
So if it's, we can treat it the same way like the downtown vision plan, but if, because that's adopted, too, we can just refer more directly to the Dogbone Working Group Report. I just pulled the standards from that because I thought it was more of a report format.
Okay.
Unless that is something that the board, you know, likes about the Dogbone, like, we say like, yes, this is in the plan, but like, here are the, the land use standards that we want. If, as it's written today, this says like, this growth area needs these changes to encourage development, and it's a little bit more straightforward.
Yeah, I guess I was just more looking for consistency, not necessarily a preference one way or the other.
A couple of comments, just little stuff. The Dogbone is defined here, appears to be different than the Dogbone, from the Dogbone Plan. This is from West Street to Desert Road, and I think the Dogbone Plan was from like the Mallet Drive area down through, unless I'm mistaken by that, so.
That's correct.
So just, it's confusing a little bit.
The original Dogbone had two circles around the downtown and went clear to Main Beer.
Main Beer, the Mallet, and then like a corridor down through.
So you're sort of like removing the northern node, the northern circle-
Right, and then the-
And putting it into the downtown village growth area under this sort of characterization, and then the rest of it stays in the Dogbone? Is that basically?
Right, I think that the-
The Dogbone's actually inside, in part of the downtown village. It's quarter down one with those nodes at either end is kind of my-
It overlaps with the downtown-
Yeah, it overlaps for sure, yeah.
With the downtown plan, and I think our intent with this mapping is to have the area covered by the downtown plan be the downtown, the Village Center Growth District, and then the area that's not in that overlap, the area between West and-
Main Beer.
Essentially Main Beer, yeah, would be a little bit different.
So it's like the southern Dogbone growth area might be a-
So what is, what is that? So what is that difference, given what the Dogbone recommendations are?
We, we, and, correct me if you want to add things or actually correct me, but I think that the intent here was that the downtown plan calls for some very specific character that's slightly different from what we foresee happening in the, around the Exit 17, coming back into town area. It's not going to look like a mirror image of downtown Freeport.
You're talking about Desert Road or Exit 17 in Yarmouth?
Excuse me, Desert Road exit. And so what I was saying is, it's not going to look like downtown, it's going to be different.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to capture with this distinction. So if, if calling it the Dogbone is somehow misleading or confusing-
Because there is a very defined, you know-
It's part of a transit corridor.
The Dogbone is looking at that whole transferred, that whole transferred district.
Which is a node at Main Beer and a node up around town, or actually two nodes up around town, if I remember right, and then, and then a strip in the middle that's only so deep down Route 1.
Right.
From Beans, let's say from the railroad bridge down to Main Beer or somewhere in the exit, so-
That's a really interesting point.
And it was part of a, correct me if I'm wrong, Carolyn, transit-oriented district, and that's defined in state law, and we've sort of have to stay within certain bounds as far as how far each side of the road we go, or this, I remember there was some kind of limitations.
Like 75 or 150.
I think they started at 550 or a-
That'd be a dream.
Yeah, go speak on the microphone.
I know, I'm going to get in trouble. We could loop back with Brett and just get him to take a final look at this as we prep it for the next meeting. The only other thing that jumps out here is that one pocket north on Desert Road, we can't have a growth area per the charter. Yeah, so we'd need to-
Yeah, I gave that note to ALA, I think they-
Address that.
There should be on, there should be a little bit more on this frontage as we discussed, and not on this side, so.
Yeah, to Wayne's point, like, the downtown village growth area would be largely impacted, and what you're saying, by like our design review ordinance, things like that, so even if we're calling for similar uses or increased densities in both areas, you know, there could be a separate policy recommendation for increased building height in both those areas. Like, people might be comfortable with one number in one area and a different number somewhere else, so I think separating them out is probably worthwhile. Is there any other?
The next section is the Dogbone Growth Area, so maybe you could start out that section by articulating the distinction between that and the-
But I think it's, I mean, it's a, I think a valid point that, I mean, one of the things that's been challenging for the ordinance is overlapping districts and definitions, so to the extent that we can, I mean, I know it's, you don't want to draw really hard lines in zoning, right? Like, you don't want to just like butt up against the end of one district and have everything change all of a sudden, not that I think that that's how it would be built out in practice, but I think in terms of clarity for people using these ordinances going forward, we should be careful about how districts are referenced.
They've spent a lot of time on the Dogbone, and we shouldn't have two Dogbones.
Right, yeah.
My understanding is that the intent of the Dogbone, the way Brett explained it to me, is that essentially west of West Street, west of West Street, or south of West Street, basically south of Town Hall is the place where they want to see, where the town wants to see the most development. So understanding that a lot of the recommendations are infrastructure upgrades for the entire corridor, so I think I got a little confused, saying like, this growth area will be impacted mostly by the Dogbone infrastructure upgrades, but I think I got a little confused, so we can take a look at it. I guess, is there any merit into saying that, yes, we have, there are two right now, but if we merged that whole downtown, like, this could be a time to say, with the Dogbone Working Groups work and report and plan, we're officially extending the downtown village to Desert Road, really to Main Beer. I mean, is that the point to say, with, with all this hard, hard work?
Big idea?
And I'm just saying, is this a time to say, like, is that the intent of the Dogbone Working Group to kind of give more room for the downtown, or is it to create that second area to connect to Desert 17, so it's not just Mallet Drive and then, you know, a bridge and LL Bean and then the highway?
Just wanted to jump in. I feel like going back to my last comment about the, the design reviewer, I feel like that the downtown village has a strong connection to that design review feel, and I feel like one of the Dogbone's priorities was to increase opportunities, make things easier for development in that area as you're going south. And by extending that, that downtown feel and character along with the kind of density allowances, you'd be introducing some of those problems of, that we have sometimes downtown of the multi-layered zoning and regulations and making things harder, so.
I mean, one of the things that I've sort of, it's been sort of a slow progression in my thinking, and this is not a very fully formed idea, so I apologize if, once again, I'm kind of misleading tonight in my attempts to articulate an idea, but we, there's been so much concern, like, when we've tried to change things, we've talked about downtown and building heights, or like the, you know, the 22 Main Street, and people clearly have attachment to the character of downtown, whether or not, you know, there's an argument about, okay, is it historic character that we're trying to preserve? Maybe it's not historic, but there's some sort of something that we're trying, that the town broadly agrees, there's something here that is good and worth protecting. And then we also have these competing goals of encouraging growth, and what if we almost flipped the, the zoning so that we had higher, like, we were more permissive, and rather than sort of like getting to a downtown that's the biggest, densest part of town, what if the downtown area were, we put more effort into preserving what we have here in the downtown area, and there were lower building heights, we didn't have big tall, but we put the big tall buildings over there, and that's where the design review is a little bit less, you know, strict. And so that's where the, the infrastructure improvements can support denser and bigger stuff a little bit further south, where the downtown area is preserved more or less as it is now, not necessarily exactly as it is now, but like in terms of scale and the sorts of things that matter to people who are experiencing the downtown as pedestrians are driving through.
But I'm not sure that accurately represents what the Dogbone's intent is, which is to cause a lot, you know, some new types of development downtown, you know, even if that means higher, in fact, it specifically says higher, higher building heights, you know?
Yeah, but I think the, I think in the downtown area, by narrowly defined, I mean, maybe it's just Main Street that gets the sort of protections of-
Yeah, I mean, as Kyle pointed out, the design review is going to be there to protect the downtown in ways that are appropriate for the historical, you know, reasons and the, you know, the things that fit in with neighborhood or not, but I think what's confusing is, you know, that when you have the Dogbone section followed by the downtown village section, there's a lot of overlap in the goals for, for development. They are slightly different, but maybe it should be one section about developing that whole area, and you could discuss the distinctions between the two, and one of them is the design review distinction.
And I think one thing, especially looking at some, or trying to remember some of the downtown vision elements, is the clunky zoning in downtown, and the Dogbone, I don't think that- I don't think the Dogbone, it does talk about zoning, it does a zoning overview of the whole area. But I think if you say, you know, if it's confused, we don't want to confuse it any further than it already is, or the design review is already clunky. What a growth area that, you know, captures Main Beer Co. to this, this northern portion, and telling a narrative, it's like, let's really clean all of that up. Like with, instead of having the Dogbone and the downtown village clashing, just seeing where, how do they work with each other?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So I, I think that's a really good idea, Wayne, yeah.
I still think we're, you know, talk about putting stuff, you know, we're still, you get downtown, Brett might say it starts at West Street, but, you know, we spent a lot of time in this town talking about downtown village, you know? And, and all the things we wanted downtown, with stores downtown and taller buildings down, bagged down here, and people living downtown so they can walk to restaurants, walk to, maybe, you know, maybe a movie theater might come back someday, or maybe something might happen. And if we shove it all down on Route One, and, you know, this, it's the new, it's the new bright shiny thing is to go down the Dogbone and not finish what we started downtown.
Right, and the downtown population was, was fifteen hundred, now it's three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we.
And we want to try to get back to those.
Everybody was happy with what the downtown vision was. And we've moved on to the next shiny penny, and, you know, let's get one thing done before we move on to the next thing, at least. I mean, we've protected the downtown so well, nobody's coming to build. That's how well we've protected it.
That's a very fair point.
Yeah.
So well protected, nobody comes. So, nobody comes to build.
One of the new things.
Except Beans, luckily.
One of the new things on, on this map that wasn't on the prior version are those circles. They're not indicating any kind of growth area, they're really on there for scale. And, and those are sized to represent kind of a, a walkable area. Play, you know, that, that's a, that's a distance that people would, would park and walk around and do things. You're, you're a lot less likely to walk all the way from, for example, L.L. Bean down to, to Main Beer. But you would walk within one of those, those circles. And each one of those, we, we kind of dropped those on, on the map that are centered on the Old County, or County Road and Route One, down on the south end, right at the exit on, in the middle, and then right downtown. So I think that is, to me, along with the fact that there is a downtown vision plan, and there is a, a clear vision and some energy and definition around that place, the, those are two arguments for, for treating them separately, to treat these areas differently. We, we talked about, you know, all the way down on that southern end, where, where Charles had shown that graphic that the landscape architects had prepared, maybe that, that's the gateway where you're kind of coming into town from Route One. That, that's the first crosswalk, I think, where you'd be able to cross Route One when you, when you're coming into town.
But I'd push back just a little on that because, you know, another recommendation of the Dogbone is to put in bike paths and things like that, and that would, wouldn't be walkable, but it would be bikeable from, you know, Beans to Main Beer, that kind of thing. So you'd be incorporating this whole neighborhood without the need for automobiles. And that's, that's one of the pushes for it.
Yep, yep, for sure. And, and that's not to take away from that recommendation at all. But I, I think the, the, the point I was making is that downtown Freeport's a place. And I, I think there's an opportunity to create a related but separate place around Main Beer and up through essentially this area. So that's, I, I think what's shaped my thinking about maybe treating these as two places. Maybe, maybe this is like the devil's advocate or counterpoint to the, to the point that Charles was laying around, where you've got a, a single common infrastructure plan in the Dogbone that covers that whole area. But I think the character was different. I think that the, the human scale, the, the sense of place is, is different enough that they're, they're likely to be two different places going forward, but interesting discussion.
Yeah, I think maybe Brett Richardson would be a good person to chat with about this topic.
Is that, Ben, is that sort of more like what I was trying to say, do you think, where there's two, there's like an opportunity to have the two?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, the vision for downtown is, is very well defined. There's a lot of consensus around it. There's a lot of energy around it. I, I don't know that that level of consensus has been found. I, I don't know if we would be comfortable like saying, oh, let's put all the tall buildings between the interstate and, you know, shots or Town Hall. But I, I think they, it could be a different kind of place than downtown. And even different from Route One South.
But, but again, they want the downtown also to be a different kind of place than it is right now.
Yeah.
I think what we can do, and I think I added some confusion, I think what we can do is talk about in the downtown, keeping them as two separate places. The, the, what, find a new name for the other one and incorporate different elements into each of them. So how the Dogbone relates to the downtown, and especially like because of its transit oriented development, I think that's something we want to put, whether we have to go back and update the existing land use chapter, or go back and, you know, add it to the future land use plan, but add both of them as transit oriented development growth areas. And if you're laying that groundwork, then let's keep that up and establish two separate zones.
I think.
Zones, but growth areas.
I think too, like when you get into the parts in each of these narratives about what needs to be done to get to the point where we want to go in both of those areas, they're starting in different places. Like our existing downtown zoning with, you know, largely like, like VC one zoning is way different than some of the southern Dogbone area where it's C one or something. You know, the, the policy recommendations that would need to come for those two areas to achieve a similar thing are different. Like, you'd be making a much more drastic change in the more southern Dogbone area than you would in the downtown area, for instance.
All that is true, but people will still be confused by, you know, they don't know what the Dogbone Growth Area means and.
Yes, we're. You know. Start with the, you know, any Dogbone.
But what if you end up calling the Dogbone area, I mean, it would be good to, if you could have two different places, you want to describe like what's the distinction? Because the general thrust of, of new development and transit options and all that stuff has a lot in common with each other. So you want to articulate maybe a little better what the distinction is upfront, I think.
Yeah, well, I think the bounds that I had, to your first point, like I, I, I will stop talking.
No, that's okay. I think, I think we need to take another look at this with Brett, but I think you were confusing it by using the term Dogbone.
Yeah, that's what I was going into.
Definitely.
We thought it'd be a growth area. We have been encouraging growth. I think it will look a little different. We've already done things to make it look different, but we know we want to encourage it in both places. So I think we should look at it with Brett, but maybe go towards more traditional planning terms of transit oriented development areas, however we break that down. So I think we could look at it and take another stab at it and bring a revision back for March, so that we're ready for the nineteenth.
I do think the bounds that I have written here, which was your first point, Wayne, which was like, you say it's from West Street, south to Main Beer Co. I think that's the two areas that I'm, that I think are distinct. I'm not sure if that's, I think that's still the bounds of the village plan.
Yeah, so I would say like the Dogbone starts maybe a little north of here.
I don't even worry about the Dogbone.
Yeah, but, yeah, I would say the village plan really didn't go past Mallett Drive and really didn't go that far past West Street. Those were like the general geographic. So I do think you're going to have some overlap because they're both near transit, public transit.
Yeah, I think that's more of an idea of how, how the Dogbone impacts both of those separately. And because what it does, and I think, Wayne, they're starting in different points. So what the Dogbone recommendations mean in the Village Center, you know, although they're all, the intent is all of them, but it means something a little different, it will appear as something different. But in the places where, I think as Brett said, they're trying to get that new investment, the larger investment, whether it's a larger project or just using some of that underutilized area.
Yeah, I, I do think because we're used to lurking, lurking at Dogbone graphics, the circles are a little bit distracting to those of us that have been looking at
Different circles.
A similar thing. I look at these circles, I question the scale of them because I feel like there is no way I could walk from Noble to the L.L. Bean corporate office in five minutes. So maybe let's just take another look and make sure those scaled out, unless I'm just a slow walker in the room. Because there's.
These are landscape architects, they walk really fast.
Yeah, they may be thinking about the radius, but even still, that's a.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty aggressive.
That's, that's like a mile and a half, probably.
It's like a fifteen minute walk in here.
Did they put a?
Yeah, I wondered.
They say five minute on there. It's a five minute radius.
Okay, so I think we just need, let's just take another look at this and the.
You guys, no, no dots, no circles because of the Dogbone?
Well, without a label, it's causing confusion. It's making me feel like I walk really slow. I'm not the only one in the room.
And I walk in that area very often, and that, it, I agree. And I didn't say anything, but that was one of my first thoughts, like, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big radius.
I actually did think, I don't even think Sam could walk here that fast.
It takes me like, if I walk quickly, it takes me seven-ish minutes to walk to Town Hall from my house.
Well, I've seen you running through town.
Just a portion.
Maybe that's how you do it.
No, no, I don't.
Did we give you like a good enough feedback to bring back and you can work with staff and the interim we can connect with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really very good discussion.
And I guess the last piece would be the treatment of Route One South. So we heard last time that, you know, it's currently in a growth area, there's not much that happens there. People have talked about it forever. Nothing has happened. But we thought that those graphics that we shared, and I can pull them up again on the screen. Maybe I can't. Artistic renderings.
Well, I talked to, I talked to Kyle, and we were talking about just some small infill down there, and maybe changing it so you could have multifamilies between the highway and Route One, but I just don't, I, once again, I think we're, it's where I live, and I just don't see that happening there, but in the next ten years.
Yeah, it seems.
It just seems.
It seems maybe aspirational.
First of all, it's state road, and tractor trailers have to go up and down at all times. So these sidewalks and all these bump outs is just gonna, you know, it's just, doesn't work. Pretty drawn, but, you know, I mean, I, I think what, I think we're trying to spread our focus way too wide. We need to build stuff downtown. We need to work on our TOD district. And, you know, maybe add a couple more permissions down there, so somebody might build a multifamily instead of a single family, two family.
So that's where, I mean, if we designate it as a growth area, we may achieve some of that, that goal.
It's already a growth area. You just needed to put, add a couple more, more permitted uses in.
Yeah, I would say, right, it's, it's a growth area now, and, you know, you allow multifamily on like the east side, but not the west side.
Which kind of.
Densities are low, so, you know, can you ever achieve the sort of density to actually make a project feasible down there, so.
Close next door to me is a two family, needs all the three acres it has to maintain its, its, you know, permitted uses.
Right, that seems not ideal.
So how was this Old County Road study come up with? I mean, how, how'd you come up with this? It was just an example of what could be on Route One South somewhere?
I think we, we looked at that, and we looked at a few inner, or, we really looked at this area and good, where they're in your good fire. It's like, where, how far down, let me go back to the map, how far down, we had talked about like how far down Route One do you want to go? Like, do you go all the way down to the Yarmouth border? And we felt the same thing that Andrew's kind of been saying, where it's like, if you, that'd be not, not changing it much today, but if you can short, make the growth area a little less, give it a little bit more, whether it is specifically calling out allowing, you know, multifamily uses, smaller lots. Just giving a opportunity for some form of new growth down there and giving it a little bit of shape here, but not extending it all the way down Route One and, you know, let that existing development down there kind of operate as business as usual, but give a little bit more attention to that. And we found that intersection of Old County Way and Route One just a good spot, a good opportunity, as it is still proximate to like the Main Beer end of the Dogbone. And if they're increasing connectivity down to there, then if there's a, you know, if it's a partnership with DOT as a state road, you can extend it even further down Two County Way perhaps, if you get the residential housing down there. So it's more, it is aspirational. But it does allow for that third growth, that third tier of growth, where we, we know that the town is identified, like let's, if there's going to be any leftover growth from the downtown village or that, the intermediate area where on Desert Road, it should be on Route One. So it's kind of accommodated to gentle density increases. And the narrative reflects that, understanding that we're not looking for twenty unit buildings to be built down here right now, not expecting it, but just some gentle infill of properties that are really underutilized.
I mean, even just the simple change of allowing more uses on the west side of Route One, seems like it could go a little ways toward, you know, making more of a neighbor, I mean, you, you're never going to have a neighborhood feel of any sort if all the housing is only on one side of the road, right? Like, then there's no reason to cross the street and then to go visit a friend or whatever. I mean, it's.
Wasting money down there.
Yeah.
We need a wider shoulder on the southbound lane. That's what we need. There's one piece of sidewalk out in front of Royal River, and they made it, put them, they made them put it in, and I think I'm probably the only ones that have stepped on it. And all it does is trap water in the road.
Where, uh, where is it?
Right in front of Royal River Health Food.
Oh, that's funny, I've never even noticed that. Yeah.
Well, a lot of people who walk up from the motels where they're being housed.
What's that?
A lot of people in those motels are walking along Route One through there.
Yeah, but they walk in the right of way. They don't walk on the sidewalk. And you can't bike on the sidewalk, you know, we really need, people want to bike by there on the southbound lane. When that was a one-way, when that was the northbound lane, ninety-five, it was one-way. They put a wide shoulder on this hand side because it's just like a highway. So the other side of the road, when it went two-way, they didn't widen the shoulder on the other side. So when I walk up and down the road, I walk facing traffic, and until you get up by the upper end by Main Beer, then the right of way widens out on, on, on the west side, which is very nice, but it should be that way all the way down. So when people want to ride, like guys in South Freeport, I know, want to ride facing traffic with their bike because everybody's on the cell phone. So you'll want to see what they're doing. And, you know, it's this wide. So you're either riding in the dirt or stepping off, you know? So that's the kind of infrastructure we need down there.
Yeah, we need a bike path there. We need a bike path in that area.
Bike lane at least, or something.
Bike lane. We have one on one side. That's if you want to ride with traffic.
Right, but there's no barrier.
We do have one last thought on the rural area. Ben, you got it.
Why don't you go ahead?
So we do have this, the, the, one thing we do have to talk about in the future land use plan is the treatment of the rural and open space preservation. So that's on the last page. And largely, it's anywhere not identified in these growth areas or in that, whatever comes of the working waterfront area. Will be limited development, so the, the standard, single family home, occasionally subdivisions of larger properties in those areas. But really looking at zoning that focuses on conservation, open space, wildlife habitat, aquifer recharge. Also, the second element of this is just the open space. So trails and connections to open space will link. I, it does talk about linking those open spaces to downtown. I know people have talked about access and how do you, if we're talking about biking down Route One, it's, do you want people to be able to bike to Hedgehog Mountain, walk there from downtown? And we say like a cohesive network of recreational opportunities. So just making sure that those spaces are, you know, used for single family home. Generally, this is saying, single family homes, open space, and then recreational opportunities. And the, within this, it also allows for like, if there's a small neighborhood that wants like, oh, we want a sidewalk here, or, it still leaves room for some investment, but nothing that will rock the landscape in any significant way. Do you have a specific question, or?
Well, it, it is more of a general question. The, the rural areas in statute and, and the rules of the comprehensive plan are, are places to protect from development, a place to shelter from the impacts of, of growth and, and change. And in a lot of communities, that translates into kind of status quo. So there, there are rural parts of Freeport where you'll find small neighborhoods, subdivisions and, and housing. And there are rural parts of Freeport where you, you find, you know, a lot less of that, maybe individual homes, larger woodlots, those kinds of things. So I, I think my question was, is the status quo in that whole big area, the biggest share of town certainly is, is not within the growth areas? Is the status quo going to serve the town, like, in this comprehensive plan? Or are there portions of that big rural area that need? Or are there portions of that big rural area that need enhanced protections or are more deserving of either conservation or regulatory changes to have less impacts and developments in the future? So we know where the conservation land is today. There's a lot of essentially low-density residential zoning over those areas, and I think with status quo, you will continue to see low-density residential development in those areas. There's a lot of undeveloped and underdeveloped land in those parts of town. I just would be interested in folks' thoughts if during the timeframe of this plan over the next 10 or 15 years, are there going to need to be zoning interventions or other regulatory things that the town can do? Land conservation work that would, that would be necessary to kind of go beyond the status quo in certain parts of town?
One thing I've heard a few residents say and reach out is in the smaller, non-conforming neighborhoods, that they don't have a desire for growth or, you know, change of the scale of their neighborhoods, but they're not able to put things like garages on their non-conforming lots based on existing setbacks and things like that, just because their lots aren't wide enough. So as we start to think about like policy recommendations and things, like, I don't know if there's ways to look at flexibility for existing developed, non-conforming lots in the rural area to not necessarily add more units or change of uses, but allow the people that already live there to kind of use their, their lots in a more flexible manner.
So flexibility, maintaining flexibility for existing non-conformity.
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, my answer, quick answer to that question is yes, I would love to explore ways to ratchet up protections for open spaces and, you know, keeping, I mean, it's sort of part of what we talked about, I think, was it last time when we were at the library? I can't remember. We definitely talked about it before of like, sort of turning the dials to more extremes, you know, focusing more development downtown so that we can be more aggressive in our efforts to protect the rural parts of Freeport. Because I think the status quo may be fine for today, but if you, if we sort of took it to its logical limit and we said, okay, what if all of the privately held land in Freeport were developed to its maximum potential? Would that still be a place, would, would the people who are living here today drive through that town, whether it takes five years, 10 years, 20 years, whatever, and be happy with what they see? Or would they think, wow, this place has really changed and I'm not into it anymore, I'm going to go move to whatever, somewhere else that is more like the place that I want to live? And I think, you know, I could imagine tons of subdivisions with, I don't know, 20 houses on...
Dead-end roads.
Yeah, you know, dead-end roads and cul-de-sacs, and those are, might be great places to live. And it's not that we should totally prohibit them, but I think we do, if there are, if there are ways to take additional steps to protect the rural character in key areas, then I would be at least interested in exploring them. I think where I think we need to be really careful is where those sorts of changes impact existing landowners. And I think we have to be careful that maybe somebody has 20 acres that they bought as an investment, or they plan to develop in a certain way for their kids, or it's their retirement fund, or that, you know, because I think these changes can have, or will have impacts on land valuations. And so we do have to be sensitive to that, and I definitely want to proceed with that sensitivity. So maybe it's, maybe it's other thing, maybe it's, as part of the comp plan, we say, look, we're not going to touch, broadly speaking, maybe we'll tweak, but we're not going to change the entire zoning policy for the rural area in pursuit of this goal. But we think the town should be diverting resources to support conservation efforts by these organizations, or something like that. Like, maybe that's the policy tool as opposed to change...
Be ready for opportunities for conservation, whether it comes out.
Yeah, and sort of making it explicit that that should be a town goal alongside a private goal. Because I think it is in the town's interest in a certain way. Like, if it, if the town continues to be a desirable place to be, then that supports all sorts of other things that the town wants to do. If, you know, people want to live here, so they want to invest in it, so, I mean, we all know that story, right? So I, I think my answer, yeah, the quick recap is yes, but we have to be careful in how we do it. And so I'm open to input, whether it's you guys researching and presenting a couple of different ways that we might be able to look at. I don't know what that looks like.
It could be something where, you know, the future land use map aside, like, I think a lot of what you're talking about, those conservation efforts are still captured in the vision and goals we were talking about earlier. But looking, I think Ben's point is like, as it relates to the future land use, the treatment of it, like, these are all existing areas that we're saying, maintain the status quo, and you guys are still doing today, like, small, single-family homes, the occasional subdivision, and that's all within the character of Freeport. But we can definitely write in into this narrative section about, you know, there might be some time in the next 10 years where we look at, we get a development, or we envision a development that could be like a 40-unit, single-family home subdivision, is that part of Freeport's character? And allows for, you know, zoning, land use changes related to that.
One thing you mentioned the other day, I do like, which doesn't require development, is connections, you know, of trails and between the town and these beautiful environmental, you know, conservation places we have. So that's something that could be, you know, implemented sooner without worrying about a developer coming and doing it.
And it can be, it can serve dual purpose, right? Connectivity for people, and also it can preserve wildlife corridors and, you know, I think it, but it, you know, it comes back to sort of the tension between the public interest in maintaining these open spaces and this connectivity between the private, like, what if you're the person that owns the last lot that's the connection, that all of a sudden somebody says, oh, you're the last lot, you can't develop it anymore because it's in the town's interest? Like, how are you compensated for that value?
Yeah, there's legal, when you go...
So I'm curious about where that tension is and how to...
When you go down that route, there's a lot of legal protections related to site plan and land use that, that will come in to play.
So I don't, I don't know what sorts of...
Is that what we want to do with the last guy on the road?
Do you like him? No.
That's not the right answer.
I think what I'm hearing is that there is, there's a way to enhance the language of the rural area to promote, like, specifically say as part of our future land use plan, looking for opportunities for trail connectivity outside of the growth areas, looking for spaces for conservation. And when we say maintain rural character, that applies to the limited development in that area. So we can expand, similar to the way we're going to expand on other terms, of what does the limited development look like in that area? And I know we're coming up on two hours, too.
So you know what the biggest driver, one of the biggest drivers I heard on my life? My taxes went up. I can't afford to live here anymore. Or why are they taxing me off my land when I've kept it open? So every time we raise taxes on, somebody's got a large lot, they're looking around saying, is it worth this much to keep this old piece of land? When I can sell it out for house lots and I move on.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Every time we raise taxes, we drive a sale in a rural area.
Yeah, I think that's a great, and that's, hopefully, that's what a lot of this work will go towards supporting relatively...
Expansion of the tax base.
Yeah, expanding the tax base in, in ways that can support them.
And that has to be controlled spending.
Yeah.
So...
That's outside of the purview of the...
Well, not really. I mean, it's a goal.
Yeah, that's fair.
And we talk about sustainable stuff.
Yep.
Sustainability is all kinds of sustainability things. Can people afford to stay in town?
Yeah. I think the sorts of policy stuff for the rural area, I know we got to wrap up, but I'm curious about like, open space subdivisions, like, are there ways to incentivize wildlife corridors or preserving open space? Like, do you say, hey, you get, I mean, it seems counterintuitive, but do you get a density bonus if you have 20 acres, but you put all of the development on these three acres at the, somewhere in there that maintains the character and the wildlife connectivity in a certain way? It's like, do you both buffer it from this important rural road and maintain a wildlife corridor at the back? Well, congratulations, now you get an extra, you know? Those sorts of, like, figuring out what those sort of zoning changes might be, those little pockets that we might be able to slot in some changes that can serve both purposes? I'd be interested in seeing that. Or maybe we change, maybe it's not a two-and-a-half acre lot.
I think there are some good examples of that, actually, west of the highway, where there's developments that have, you know, nice big chunks of land with trails and, you know, untouched forest, which was part of the deal that the developer made.
Those are policies and strategies that can support that environmental goal and the balanced growth goal. I think what I was getting to was, and what I am hearing to confirm, is the rural area is not just a place to park single-family homes or build two-acre subdivisions, it's a place that should be a focus for future conservation efforts. I'm not hearing, you know, specific areas that should be critical rural habitat, where you want, you know, one lot per 10 acres and, and like, you're absolutely going to focus conservation efforts and dollars there. Some towns will designate those areas separate from rural, where rural ends up kind of being the more or less status quo and critical role is, you know, extra strong protections for environmentally sensitive areas or areas with such important community character that it would be, you know, really tough to imagine a 40-lot subdivision popping up in a certain part of town.
I mean, I'm sure if I had 10 minutes and a highlighter, I could come up with my own personal opinion of areas in town that would be really valuable. I think, and that I would love to see, yeah, 10 or 20 acre minimum lot size, but I don't own those areas, I don't have that say. And so I guess that's my question, is like, are there those opportunities? Or do we just immediately run up against private landowner rights that rightly don't need to be trampled for...
So why don't we put a, to be continued on this one? I feel like we've got some more direction. I think even if we leave the map the same, there are some things we could do in the narrative, as well as in the recommendations for policies and strategies that could provide some like broader town-wide ideas, but also maybe leave some room for like, these conversations to happen in the future. Maybe they don't need to happen immediately, but they could happen a couple years from now, three years from now, for some more detailed open space or rural kind of discussions. So, good. Again, thought provoking, for sure.
Cool, cool, two hours. So just a little, just one last bit. So we're meeting on March 5th. What I'll do is, Ben and I will share some of the updated vision, goals, future land use map, hopefully we can get to you alongside that as well, and updates the narrative. So we'll get that to you, but we also want to provide some policies next week and something to think about related to the policies, but something we can tackle after the workshop because we're going to have a little bit more policies implementation. So as you start thinking about some of the policies that you want to see with these goals, whether it is on open space, and, and open space is a good thing, it's that, who would be in charge of that? That'd be the planning board. And that's an example of a policy and who's going to be doing it, how it gets done. So start thinking about policies as it relates to these goals, look at all these plans, things that haven't been done, things you want to get done as it relates. And we'll have a good structured conversation for each goal and how policies relate to it, where it fits best. And ideally, we will also have as much as we can in a first draft form for the workshop. So we meet on the 5th, one month from today. And we're not, this board is not going to be discussing the final draft that night, we're going to be saving that for April. But March 19th, as you all know, some of you can't make it, that's totally fine, is the workshop, but for the powers that be, for the public, March 19th is the public workshop for the first draft. We'll have that posted. We do want to bring that first draft in the format to staff and to the planning board before posting it, but as we bring it to the board that night, I'll post it to the website. We'll send it out, send email blast, get everyone to start looking at the updated inventory chapters and the rest of the plan material, which we've already talked about here at great length. So that's just what's coming up, going to be a busy month for staff and for North Star to get that, but also if it would be really beneficial if you guys come to the March 5th meeting, ready to, you know, throw out policies, ideas. All ideas are good ideas, so don't hold back. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We do have technically another item on our agenda. Thank you very much to both of you guys for your continued hard work on this.
Do you want the table?
Yeah, I think, I think we should probably table for the benefit of Mitch and Bonnie's input. Do I hear a motion to table?
We do need to...
Motion to table. Elections, election of officers.
Yeah, and a second?
Second.
Did somebody already second that? All in favor? All right, great. So that motion is tabled. Do I hear?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? All in favor? Great, all right. Thanks, everyone.